Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started. Mayor Benjamin is out of town, so it's councilwoman who will get started.
All right, good afternoon. Mr. Rickman, Mr. McDowell, Mr. Duval, Mr. Bedora, Mr. Vine, Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mayor Benjamin. Thank you.
Put the record on here.
Oh, Mr. Rickman.
Now, he just jumped right before I could respond. Well, I'd like to thank you for today, thank you for this opportunity to get together to do the work of the city, inform our decisions, protect those that are not with us today and they're traveling, and maybe work in your for your good always.
I'll let you know that Mayor Benjamin may be calling in during the open session this evening. Ms. Krista?
As Krista comes forward, Mr. Davis, I'll announce it for the record, the Gills Creek Greenway Discussion. Ms. Krista Hampton, Planning and Development Services Director, I'm sure we have some interested parties present with us today, and also is John gonna present, Krista, okay, Mr. John Bellas as well with our Plan and Development Services Department.
And as John's already come up, yeah, this is actually going to be much shorter than it had originally been intended. The reason being, we've been communicating with the Gills Creek Watershed Association, had some very good conversations about some widths of the greenway and some compromises to try to get to a place where it meets the cities and the association's needs, so I'll go ahead and introduce them.
Good afternoon. As Krista mentioned, we have had-
Can I interrupt for a minute? Are we recording?
Can you pull the microphone closer to your microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that open?
Yeah, that's on.
Go ahead. I'm just waiting for it to make sure they get there.
They're on.
Are they on? All right. As Krista mentioned, we have had some ongoing conversations. These conversations actually have gone on for a number of months. Valerie and I have had conversations, as well as Valerie and Krista, talking about some of the standards. And you recall, we came to you in 2015 with some standards before really any of the greenway planning came together, but we knew as staff that we need to have something to be guiding some standards and things. And then, a few months later, okay, here we go, a few years later, then you actually entered into an agreement with the county that indicated what those dimensional requirements were going to be. And what we have learned through this process is that we had some very simple criteria, but there's a lot more nuanced things that go into a greenway. And I think the county and the PDT have learned a number of things about planning the greenway. We've certainly learned a lot about the Gills Creek corridor in particular, and some of the constraints and things that we have. And so, I think it was last week, we had some conversations, and I shared an email to Valerie and to Gills Creek, kind of outlining some of the things-
I'm sorry, just for the record, describe Valerie in full name and what does Valerie do when you're referencing Valerie?
Sure, Valerie Marcel, and she is with the Gills Creek Association. She's been our main contact with that nonprofit here in Columbia. And so, when we have had these conversations, basically, last week, we kind of put into text some of the things we were gonna look at. In fact, staff, a while back, actually started looking at the standards that we brought to you, knowing that we needed to update some of them. We've seen some, had some partnerships, had a lot of conversations. So, when I say staff, I also want to clarify, it's a partnership between parks and engineering and planning and public works. And so, all of those departments actually have been at the discussion table, discussing things as long-term maintenance, logistics, of changing a light bulb, all sorts of things like that. And we've also talked to Gills Creek to understand their concerns. And so, some of the things that we're gonna be looking at, we're gonna be coming back to shortly, probably in a few weeks to sometime in August, with some revised standards, is looking at some things for flexibility, because before we had kind of one width, but we didn't really consider, for instance, those side connecting trails. So, it's sort of like, if you think about a road, sometimes you have an arterial road that's five lanes, but then you have that side street that's only two, and so we really don't need the width to make those connections from neighborhoods to the larger dimensions. But that agreement between the city and the county actually had just one dimension, and so they've just been working with one dimension from that perspective. So, there'll be some cost savings there, and also a little bit of a different experience when you go from the neighborhood to the larger trail. We've also talked to them about reducing the width from railing to railing to be 12 feet along the boardwalk area, as well as some of the trail areas. And then, we've also had some conversations about the area along Cross Road. It's a kind of an interesting urban area, and in our conversations, we need to be able to, the design needs to have flexibility, because there's some constraints of the urban condition, we're next to a road, we have private property, we have a kind of steep drop-off into Gills Creek. And so, we'll try to craft some language that then can be incorporated, and that when the Pennies designing the trail, those can be considered. And we're also gonna look for some exceptions, because we know that whatever standards we come up to with, at some point, whether it's with Gills Creek, or Rocky Branch, or Smith Branch, or something like that, there's gonna be that unique situation that needs something slightly different as the solution. And so, we'll have some built-in exceptions that will allow for some flexibility that are maybe unforeseen. And so, we're gonna be working on, staff will be working on that, and then we're going to engage in a few weeks with the Gills Creek Watershed Association to have them review the comments, and then we'll come back to you after there's been some revisions and both groups have gone back and forth, and then we'll be able to present in more detail some of those changes to all of you, and then we could hand that off to the county.
John, in the original county meetings, when the penny dollars would be appropriated, they had a plan laid out, and we were told that we can't make any changes, that everything is solid the way it is. Have they told you, we can make these changes?
So, there are staff here from the PDT, so I totally want to speak for them, but my understanding, all the way through the process, and I think it was the understanding of other city staff, is that, for instance, if there is a particular segment from a road improvement, or a sidewalk over greenway, and it was supposed to go from point A to point B, that was not flexible, that was the section. So, they couldn't go an extra block, and they couldn't, they could certainly go less, but they certainly couldn't go bigger, and they could switch it to three streets over, or something like that. But my understanding is that the details in terms of some of those other types of construction-type details are not part of that referendum, so those things have been developed over time to be able to construct those. For instance, I think with Gills Creek, I don't think at the time of referendum, anyone had any idea of how much boardwalk or how much pavement there might be. That wasn't probably even determined until maybe within the last year, when all the survey and everything, and uplands and lowlands, and everything was actually detailed out.
I think if somebody's here who could, you know, confirm that for us, but it was pretty specific is that, you know, the plan is the plan, you know, we have these two variations, and this is the cost, and, you know, we can't do anything to change that cost. So, I just want to make sure that we're not spinning our wheels here on something that we have to have somebody else agree to or not. Well, I mean, I think we need somebody from PDT to do that.
And then you can just state your name for the representative.
Hi, councilmembers, and my name is Amy Blizzard, and I'm the Deputy Program Administrator for the Penny Tax, for the Bike Ped Greenway Program. So, and thank you for your question, because there is, you know, a lot of confusion over what we can change and can't. What John said is absolutely correct, though. The termite, or the scope of the project, is sort of fixed, or it is fixed. But when it comes down to things like design, which comes much later, you know, after the referendum, there are always gonna have to be some design changes that will be made. In fact, we don't even have construction plans at the very beginning. That's the process that we've been going through for the last few years. And there are going to always be some adjustments that you'll have to make after you get geotechnical information, soils informations, and, like John said, things like habitats, wetlands, and stuff like that. So, he was absolutely right, and it is something that we have been trying to help coordinate between the Watershed Association and the county, to try to get the project to where it's most appropriate for the environment there.
Do we have contingency built into that budget? Because, I mean, obviously, you know, things have changed, and, you know, we don't want to go halfway on a project and not get it completed. Do we have a contingency for that?
All of our projects have some base contingency as far as the cost. And throughout the process, as the design changes, we look at the estimates, we look at what we're actually facing in dollars. So, yes, to answer your question.
I mean, for us, it's important, because obviously, you know, our concern would be, as things move along, we don't have extra funding to fund that project at this point. We, you know, we're struggling to come up with the maintenance money that we're gonna be needing at the end, so we want to make sure that, you know, whatever happens, it's gonna be able to go, because I think people are waiting at this point.
Yeah, I'll go after you.
Okay. I just wanted to compliment Valerie and John and all the people who are involved in the compromise. I think that's the way government should work. This section of the greenway is a very important section. The reduction from 14 to 12 feet, I think, according to my conversation with David Beatty, will allow us to get to Timberlake, Timberland, which is key. You cannot terminate this thing at Becliffe. Becliffe is a neighborhood that's not built for the traffic that I think that the greenway will have. So, we need to make that a spur, as John called in his email, and have the main boardwalk go down to where you hit Timberland. I'm pleased that we recognize that there's gotta be some flexibility, and compliment Valerie and John and all the team for working things out.
And following that point that Councilman Duval has mentioned, what are the cost savings from 14-foot width to a 12-foot width, or 10-foot width? I mean, does it matter if you can go down as low as 10 feet instead of 12 feet to extend the track, or is it?
Yeah, absolutely. We will provide some savings. Anytime that you can, you know, reduce the width, you're talking about the width of the concrete, the width of the, that has to be poured, or the width of the boardwalks that have to be bought and, you know, installed. From some of our estimates, we see per linear foot, it would, it's about a, about 10, between $10 and $50 a linear foot, depending on the material, and depending on if it's high or low. It may not seem like very much, but when you take something that's 3.2 miles, or, you know, is a substantial greenway, the savings really do add up. And like you had alluded to, it would allow us to actually give an extra, about 2,500 feet of boardwalk, which, about a half a mile more, so, and giving us a terminus that's a logical terminus.
So, is that a half a mile for three and a half mile?
It would add to that, yeah, the 3.2, yeah.
So, where did you-
The 3.2.
It's right now, it's under one mile.
Yeah, my apologies, I was thinking of all three phases, excuse me.
Okay.
Yeah, my apologies, thank you.
So, for three and a half mile, after we decrease the width, you get an extra, almost an extra mile of length to connect it. So, and why are we, since we're talking about adjustment on the design and pathway from 14-foot to 12-foot, why not 10-foot?
So, staff did discuss that. There certainly are paths out there that are 8 feet and 10 feet, but across the country, for the last 20 or 30 years, as greenways have been built, they actually see a lot more volume at the end. And so, communities have had to do, they've actually had to go and, they've actually had to expand those, because the volume of people using the greenways actually exceeds, and they start trampling the sides. The sides of the asphalt over roads starts to crumble because of the traffic, and then it becomes a maintenance issue. And so, a number of years ago, when we did the Divine Street Fort Jackson Plan, we actually took a trip up to Charlotte to learn about the Little Sugar Creek Trail. We actually learned from their designers some of the things that they had. So, when we came back, and we started looking at the greenway system here, one of the things staff wants to make sure is that we don't so, design it so narrowly just for the sake of length, that all of a sudden, we're gonna end up with this population using the trail, and people aren't gonna fit. It's sort of, I kind of make the relationship of, if you know you need a four-lane road to handle the traffic of cars, you know that if you only build a two-lane road, you're gonna have congestion, and people are gonna complain about it. And so, there is sort of that dimension, being on the Rosewood side of the creek, and particularly when you get past Timberland, there's a lot of roads and the connection to Rosewood connects, so people can actually walk and ride their bike, and then they'd be able to go north on this greenway and go up to Whole Foods and things like that. And so, we anticipate that there's gonna be a number of users. And so, the other thing is, this boardwalk, for a large portion of it, is gonna be a high boardwalk. So, when you're on a trail and it's paved, you have the grass as a shoulder. So, if you do get a little bit of congestion, people can kind of step to the side, or that kind of thing. But when you're on a boardwalk and you have railings, there's really nowhere for you to go. And the other component of the design is that, one of the requirements from the city is to have them illuminate the trail illuminated, as well as having call boxes. And so, when you start introducing the light poles within that 12-foot space, then that's an extra two feet by the time you put the base in. Same thing with the call box. So, at those points, you actually start to have a little bit of a narrower width. Now, granted, that's not a long width, but you're gonna have these portions where they go back and forth. And if you ever parse, find that they need to put more trash cans out there, that's gonna be within that space. And then if there's a call, in the plans, there are no benches on the greenway, but we know for our older population, whether it's a street or a trail, often, they will use it if there's places to rest. But they will tend not to use it if there's not. And so, if we think about it in the future, if we ever have to put benches on the trail, that also, you know, a bench takes up three feet, so you're gonna be within those railings. And so, we feel that 12 provides the width for volume, as well as all those other components that are gonna be in that space. So, we think that's a good compromise, and it will get us to a better location for access from that perspective, so.
Okay. Thank you, John. See, I don't think you've really done your homework.
Valerie would like to speak after you.
Is that, all right, good.
I'd just like to, okay. I'm Valerie Marcel, and I believe in transparency, and I think that costs are really important, a really important factor to consider. And I've been trying for a long time to get estimates for the greenway in different widths for boardwalk. And finally, just in the last couple of weeks, I've gotten some estimates from a couple of different sources. One, for the eight-foot wide boardwalk that has been built on the Saluda Trail, and then also the Penny has provided estimates per linear foot for a 10-foot width and a 14-foot width. It didn't get a 12-foot width. I think at the time, I was advocating for a 10-foot width, so we didn't get the 12-foot. But I have some handouts here, I'd just like to share. I'm gonna just pass those out. And I'm still, I'm willing to, you know, go with this compromise. But I want everybody to understand that the way I'm running numbers, the Penny has said that a 14-foot wide high boardwalk would cost $1,100 per linear foot. That would end up, for the length of boardwalk that we're dealing with, being about $3,630,000. That is probably twice what's allowed for in the budget that exists within the Penny program for that greenway. And that's just for the boardwalk, and that's just construction costs, it's not labor and other things. So, I don't know what the Penny has been planning, but that's the number they gave me. If we go down to a 10-foot width, and let's, it's $900 per linear foot. I don't have the numbers, as you can see here, for 12-foot width, because I didn't ask for that at the time. I'm assuming that 12-foot would be about 1,000 feet, that would be the split between 900 and 1,100. If we went to 12 feet, it's still over $3 million. I'm not sure, again, if I'm running those numbers right. I used my calculator, and used the figures that were given to me. So, I'm not sure where that goes. A 10-foot wide boardwalk would be under $3 million. It gets a little bit closer to what the budget is. The budget for that boardwalk, right now, for construction, is under $2 million. It's about, correct me, but I think $1,800,000, something like that. So, I'm really not sure what we're dealing with, but the Penny has been planning this boardwalk from Fort Jackson Boulevard to Michael Lane, which is just under a mile, saying that we can build that at 14 feet wide. So, I'm not sure where the discrepancy is, I'm just giving you figures. I would love more figures, better figures, and that's, oops, I just lost, that's why I'm throwing this out. I just lost the mic.
You know, this may be a good time to formulate a letter to this Penny. You know, and I think we've all talked about it before, but, you know, it may be time for the Penny to reevaluate all the projects and rearrange, because I think this project originally had a stint going into King's Grant and other places, which it's not doing, obviously, you know. And should that funding be switched to that other, I think this is a good time to have a conversation with the Penny folks. I know there's gonna be some transitions, so it's kind of, you know, a unique time in the next six months, but I think there can be a request for the committee to reevaluate the project and make sure that, A, they have complete funding, maybe reprioritize them. I think we'll be in the best interest of all the citizens of Richardson County at this point, because clearly, with the funding source, as quickly as it's moving, and this and that, we're not gonna be able to accomplish. So, having the priority and really trying to get the biggest bang for the buck for the citizens is, and I think this, from Jackson Boulevard, I think even at one point, we figured out, if we did it right, we could get all the way to the Tressle thing.
Yes, yeah.
Are there any type of approvals needed at this point from this, by the PDT, from the city, other than this agreement on the width?
So, to answer both questions, in terms of other agreements, so we would have to adapt or modify the width, we would have to re-modify that agreement with the county. And my understanding is that would be the only transactional document we would need to address, and then attach the new standards to that document. To answer Councilman Rickman's question, last Thursday, I believe it was, I was at a meeting at the county, and David Beatty provided a brief update on some of the next steps that the county plans on taking. I'll try to summarize it, but if I correct it, if I mess up on any of those off of memory, hopefully, one of the people from the PDT will respond. But I believe county council has a number of meetings coming up here, one in August, I think, end of July, and then in August, and then a following meeting in August. And one of those meetings, they were going to take up the conversation of moving the other areas of Gills Creek to this particular corridor from Fort Jackson. So, the money from King's Grant and from by the lake, those areas would be reallocated to this particular project, which then would help fund it, definitely through Timberline, if not maybe even a little further, but that's to be yet to be.
But they have to approve, they have to change that from a policy standpoint. And my understanding is, because of the Supreme Court case and everything that's going on, they have to reprioritize everything.
I believe that-
And do a public meeting about that, and I think that's, we should write a letter of support in that halfing, is what I'm getting at.
Is there anything else to add?
That's the question, about the council's gonna be taking us to the greenway discussion on the 23rd of July. For a lot of the, July, for a lot of reprogramming, for reprogramming of the greenway sections that aren't public relations, so.
That particular meeting on the 23rd will not only look at just Gills Creek, but all the other one, other greenways, and then they'll just find which greenway will be built and which ones will not be built.
That's a meeting of the PDT, the committee, or-
That's County Council's work session.
Not a meeting anymore until August, okay.
So, they will have all the trails designed and/or locations for from the Penny Tax program?
No, my understanding is that, so they have, over the last 12 months, they have finished up all their public meetings on all the different greenways. So, they've had public meetings on Rocky Branch, and Crane Creek, and Smith Branch. Gills Creek happened a while ago. They also had some other public meetings for some of the greenways that were solely in the county, and received community feedback from that. And so, very similar to Gills Creek, there are some portions that the community supported, some portions the community didn't support. And so, my understanding is, on the 23rd, what they'll do is they're going to actually reprioritize or reallocate, however they, whatever word, I guess it is. But some items that were on the original list would not be moved forward for construction, and then those other ones that were, had public support would be moved forward for construction. And then, at that point, I would guess sometime after the transition, those other greenways that have not had any designs, the county would start doing the construction drawings and items like that. I think that's the summary of my understanding.
Thanks, John. So, what I'm hearing, I need to communicate with them, status of modifications, changes.
So, you would- Well, what I'm hearing is, some of it has been done, but I don't know that everybody knows.
The plan that I set forth with the Gills Creek Association was that over the next few weeks, staff was going to convene, we actually have a meeting on the calendar for tomorrow, for us to try to get through drafting some more detailed guidelines, and the exception section, and things like that. And then we're going to give it to Gills Creek for a few days to, for them to review, and then we're gonna come together as a group and review those documents. And then, once there was consensus on those things, and if there wasn't consensus, something, we'll bring that up to you and say, you know, there's this, something that needs to be balanced there, but we hope there'll be consensus. And then we're gonna bring it back to you, a work session for you to consider. And then the idea would be that those formal documents between the city and the county would come to council. And then, what happened last time was Ms. Blitzen, I believe, sent a letter over to the county. But if you wanted to send a letter now in support of their actions on the 23rd, that probably would be something that could also be done. But I think we need a good, we're gonna get, we probably won't be able to see you until, with those recommendations, until probably one of your August meetings. We just need a number of weeks.
And that's Gills Creek, but I think we're talking about an overview.
Yeah.
Right.
Penny Tax, yeah.
John, I guess my concern is this, is that gonna give us enough time to collaborate, not only with the county and with the association and all those persons involved, enough time to come and, on the 23rd, reasonably bring this back to us on the 23rd?
So, I think there's two different things, and if I would confuse it, I think there's the process that the county is going through, and they're going to have that at their meeting on the 23rd. And that is something that is exclusive of Gills Creek. They're just basically going to decide which greenways they're going forward with and which ones not. I believe there is support for a portion of Rocky Branch, and Smith Branch, and a little bit of Crane Creek in the city, and then obviously Gills Creek, but there's some other ones that are fully the county's, and that's what they'll be dealing with on the 23rd. From our end, with the design standards, that is something we would not have done by the 23rd. We would need about a month or so to collaborate and then bring it back to you. And then, late August, early September, or something like that, that's when you could communicate that, those dimensional standards. And well, obviously, in the process, we're gonna engage with the, with the design team over at the county to make sure that they're looped into. over at the county to make sure that they're looked into.
So do you all want us to reiterate the letters we've already sent regarding prioritization of city projects to the county before their meeting next week? Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't know if it's next week or not.
Their, the county's meeting is next week. I didn't realize the county was meeting in their office session, which usually meet during the summer there. But if they are, I mean, you want us to do that.
I think it's just not city projects, I think it's in general, I mean, overall, because every piece of that overall planned budget affects every other piece, especially the changes that have happened. And, you know, the reality is the money's coming in quicker, costs have gone up, so there hasn't been a true balance of that since then. So, you know, it, it would be worth just to encourage them.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that and make it brief, so we get the [inaudible].
Well, I think it's, it's gonna be a letter saying what y'all are supporting, or whatever it's worth.
We'll have to get an update after that meeting to see what projects, what they're moving on and that kind of thing.
Um, if you'd like an update, we can certainly, after that meeting, I'm sure the Penny team will provide us whatever minutes or whatever the actual was, and we can certainly send you an email update.
Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you, John. Ready to go to the next item? You done with this item, Ms. Beeks?
I'm high, Mr. Beeks.
All right, our second item, Krista's up a lot for this, and her staff for this work session, is a text amendment for eating and drinking establishments, which is on your agenda for tonight. And we wanted to make sure that council had the opportunity to ask any questions of staff and seek clarifications.
And Rachel Bailey, our senior administrator, will assist me with this. The provisions that are coming to you this evening are included in the proposed new code, but they are coming forward earlier to help alleviate some of the confusion that's happened with regard to eating and drinking establishments. And there are three very clear categorizations, and I'll let Rachel kind of describe those to you. Good afternoon. So we're breaking it down, instead of having it restaurants and drinking places, we have eating establishments only, which the example I give is a McDonald's. So they're open at various hours of the day, but they do not serve alcohol. We have eating and drinking type one, which encompasses a mix of restaurants, bars, just places that do serve alcohol, but the cutoff is midnight. So we're looking really at hours of operation now. Type two is midnight and later, so if they're open until twelve oh five, they fall under type two, and they have to get a special exception from the Board of General Appeals. And they also have to present a great deal of information upfront before they even go to the board. Business plan and all of that.
Why twelve to two when state law it is to, right?
We don't have the closing time set in there, so if they go, you guys would assume an hours permit, that's one thing. But the midnight cutoff.
I'm concerned the difference between twelve and two, how, how do we?
The midnight cutoff will encompass more of those late night places that have been more of an issue and that neighborhoods have wanted to have more of an opinion on. So in certain districts, it'll bring it before the board to go over a proliferation. So if there's five places in a row that are open until two in the morning, that's what they're gonna be looking at, whereas an Applebee's, for example, can sometimes be open till midnight.
Right.
But they would fall under type one. So that's just, we originally had it at eleven PM and we pushed it to midnight.
Well, we've become an eighteen-hour city, so we have to plan that.
So, and I mean, some places will come before the Board of General Appeals and we'll be fine, but we're gathering all that information upfront so that, just more transparent when the packets are published with the board, everyone, the neighborhoods, can see what's coming. And it also gives staff an opportunity to really build a portfolio of what these businesses are.
Here you have a question now?
Yeah, I, so I've got a couple of them. One, I noticed in here that restaurants are, are gonna be allowed in C2 zone properties. Should I read that right or not?
Yeah, and they currently are.
They currently are. With a special exception with Bozo or not?
Um, there's a sizing requirement currently in C2 that will remain of the five thousand. If they go above that, it's a special exception. But type one is allowed outright if it's within that sizing quota.
And that means the fast food.
Fast food, the ones open until midnight.
Okay. Uh, the other question I have is on the patio and the two-hundred-feet distance between RS1, RS2, RS3, RG1, RG2. Is the two-hundred-and-fifty-feet limitation from an outdoor seating to RS1, is that from the edge of the, the outside seating, the building, the property line? Where does that come, I mean, you have to, I mean, it's not clear in this ordinance.
It'll be from the outside edge of the outdoor seating to the property line, what?
That's the part that I partake with, because we're, we, we, we just got through talking about Greenways. We're talking about walkability, we're trying to create corridors where people can live and eat. How's that gonna affect the Vista or the Five Points if we, we have developers come in and put restaurants and patio and they got ripped?
They're not.
And the neighborhoods next to it, I mean, there are a lot of neighborhoods that are growing that people want to walk and go eat in their neighborhood, and I think this is gonna create some restrictive problems. Should, should the patio be by special exception, not by a, a rule of, of two-hundred feet or two-fifty? Because I mean, that, you could go in Rosewood and Shannon right now and you eliminate people in today's thing, and it does not call in there for anybody being grandfathered in.
So, I mean, they, if it's existing, we're not gonna go get them and make them shut it down.
But it would be clear.
But it would be if they expanded it, and the Vista, for example, doesn't back up to a lot of the.
What if you put a new rail, that's an improvement, then you're, you're cut, I mean, that's the way it reads.
For the type two, what falls under that?
For that.
The type two comes under the special exception for improvements, expansions, and everything like that. Now, I want to clarify, outdoor seating is permitted, it's just, it just has to be further than two-hundred-and-fifty from the rest, so you can have your out, you can have your establishment, it's just where you put your patio. You wanna put it at least two-hundred-and-fifty feet away from the parcel.
But why, I mean, what, where?
So if I'm in my backyard in my house.
Right, but if you're living next door to a commercial district, I mean, that's.
But a commercial district.
You know what you're, if you're moved next door to, I don't know, pick a restaurant there, and they have outdoor, I mean, you've made that decision, you, you, I mean, what, what I'm hearing you do is you're handicapping the ability for people to create an atmosphere that, that people wanna walk to and be part of a neighborhood by restriction. Well, it is, because you're putting it by foot.
That, that is the antithesis of what we try to do in planning, which is walkable neighborhoods. What we're trying to do is encourage outdoor dining, but for them to place it generally towards the street as opposed to in the back of their front.
So why don't we just say that instead of putting a foot on it? Why don't you just say, because?
You can't anticipate, you can't anticipate.
Well, it's not, because you can measure it from six different locations, if it's the edge.
ABC measures it from the front door.
Right, so we're talking about from the patio, from the edge of the patio to the parcel line. So two-hundred-and-fifty feet, that's not even a half of the block outside here, from, from the edge of someone's residential parcel to this. And this is for new development, so if I buy a parcel that's adjacent to a commercial property, of which I'm very familiar, then, and it's a, it's an office, yeah, that's cool. But if it converts to a restaurant and they wanna put a patio in that, that may not be. And I, you know, I understand that it's commercial, but we, we're putting these protections in just to make sure it's an easy, because you can bet they'll be back here talking to y'all about the fact of the noise and perhaps the [inaudible].
But that's why, I, I, to me, it almost makes sense to make it, that it's a special exception, so that, that, that you have to put out a, a real plan along with, you know, all the criteria that goes with that, instead of just saying it's two, I mean, I don't like the two-hundred feet, I think it should be longer, but.
Is it four-hundred feet now?
There are no.
No, no restrictions.
Where is the four-hundred?
You're, you're mixing it up with your other.
That's more [inaudible].
Yeah, that's in the current, so that's.
So let me, let me, let me just.
James read enough about that, so we need to bring that up today.
I've, I've, I've done restaurants all my life just about. I mean, I, it, it is impossible to locate a deck or an outside seating front of a building or back of a building. It just, it just depends on the, the demand and, and the growth of the business and everything else. I, I'm not comfortable with two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the edge of the patio. I mean, I, I'm not very comfortable with that at all, number one. Number two, I don't think it's very clear to hear that all the ones that is in existence ran its grandfathered in. We need to make that specific, because otherwise you're gonna close half the restaurants in, in the city. The number three is on some of the requirements on here for the special exceptions that requiring restaurants to bring you kitchen equipment, staffing schedule, days of hours. A lot of that stuff is already within the DEHAC permit. You, you're just giving another, you're giving them another step, another red gate for businesses to open up and start making revenue and start operating. I just think some of that needs to be cleaned up a little bit more, if that's possible. I, I, I'm definitely, I'm gonna urge and support grandfathered-in quote in here, the two-hundred-and-fifty feet has to be re-discussed and maybe look at the exact location where the two-hundred-and-fifty feet comes, or maybe more. And then maybe some of these other requirements that you guys require restaurant owners to do that have already done with DEHAC or any other government agency to, to qualify. So I think this is my three concerns in here, more than anything else. But if you tell me C2 is already in existence with special exceptions and stuff like that, you know, okay, I'll believe you on that, so.
And just to follow up on those requirements that you referenced, and those are specifically for the type two ones, when they're coming for a special exception. And just to give you some background, background of how we handle it now, when someone comes in for a restaurant or a drinking establishment, I ask them for all of that information in making my decision anyway. So it's just putting it down in writing that they have to give me the business plan and all that information, because it builds a record so that if they begin to operate in a different manner than what they presented to the board when they go for a special exception, we have that information.
But do we require that of all businesses? Did they submit a, a, a business plan?
I can, if I'm unable to determine really what their use is or what their specific.
Is that a requirement in the city of Columbia?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
So why are we, why are we going after one industry? I mean, this is to me selective and, and, and it gives me heartburn. It, it, it does, because models change, businesses change. You have to change your hours if the business isn't there and, and all the other things. And then they're gonna have to come back and get a, 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 a letter from you that it's okay? We don't do that with law offices, we don't do that with non-taxpaying entities, we don't do that with other folks. Y'all, I think we're, I think we're trying, whoa, 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 time out.
This is not bars.
This is bars. This is bars, I mean, don't, don't muck up the issue, let's talk about the facts.
But most is that they already do this for DEHAC. If they already got the information, well, why is it not easy just to hand it over to the business?
DEHAC doesn't require you to give them a business plan. They, you have to give them a kitchen plan.
Yeah, and that's what I got in here, kitchen equipment, menu, park, I mean, that's, it's, I mean, if DEHAC already requires that, there's no reason for you to.
I mean, we don't ask the bathing CBD guys to [inaudible].
We, we have required business plans of other businesses, just to ensure. If, if it's [inaudible] recently, we asked for business.
But they don't have, technically, they don't have to give it to me, because it's not a requirement by the city. That's what I've been told, am I correct?
That's what it was, I mean, that's what you just said.
So this, what I have a problem is that we, we're, we're putting it in there as a requirement for folks to do that. I think having, having your drawings, having your, you know, your, all the things that you need and DX, that's conditions that we have to do, but asking somebody for their business plan and this and too, I mean, if we're not gonna do it for everybody, we're not doing it for one industry. I just, I, you know.
Okay.
Those guys selling, you know, open up a store and they're selling, they start off selling candles and then they're selling water bombs and vaping like things, we don't go shut them down, we don't go back and do it, but we're picking on a, a, a certain industry.
Understood. What you, please understand where we've been coming from with this is, is a lot of, a lot of critique and focus on how we've been permitting businesses, especially in the hospitality districts. So we are responding to that, and we understand your concern. If it's the World Council, we will move it.
Can I just make a statement? Hold on, hold on, I, I, I appreciate everything y'all doing. I, we, we, let me, let me just be clear, we are not upset about your hard work and everything that you brought to us. We, we, please understand us, we love everything you do and we understand you work hard and, and you try to please everybody, but there are some things in here that we as the council, I mean, every single one of us has specialty or knowledge or experience, you know, and beyond a normal person, I mean, that's what makes a collective council. But when we make suggestions, we're not attacking you guys, I'm saying, I'm just being careful, okay? So, be, that being said, are you changing or doing any modifications on the food trucks? Because technically, they are restaurants, even though they're not, you know, brick and mortar, but are you requiring a business plan, staffing schedule, hours of operation, kitchen equipment? I mean, this is just, I mean, this is something that we wanna eliminate as government, what you call redgating everywhere, because you, you're making the product, process longer than it needs to be. So that's the things we wanna improve. We wanna help you to make your job easy, at the same time, we wanna acknowledge our expertise and our knowledge in that field to make this better.
Understood. And what we're trying to balance is making sure it's easy with the protections we've heard that council also wants to have. So we will try to, to, to walk that line, and we need to know from you what's, what's essential to protect and to have the information, or what you would like to remove to make it easier to apply.
I think if we're gonna ask for a business plan, we ask for everybody to provide. I think we have, our laws are supposed to be, and ordinances should be, that everybody has to comply the same way, and this is what causes problems, headaches, and this. And I understand that there are concerns from some people, but they're not the majority of the community. We have to quit tailoring things to the minority. There is a whole nother world outside of Five Points.
But, but the.
And, and, and it affects every business, so if we're gonna do it, it has to be across the board. It cannot be in one industry, that's just not fair.
And we don't wanna discriminate against eating establishments, whether type one or type two or type ten. I mean, you know, it's, it's, we have to be business friendly as much as we can. And I don't think, I don't think this is out of confusion.
Krista, you're going to. We're not presenting tonight, so.
No, we'll.
We've got some time to maybe take into account the discussion here.
Yeah, if you'd like some direction on, on some of these items.
Yeah, if, if, if there's a need to follow up with new.
I'd be glad to sit with you and me after you go.
Okay. The only thing that stands out to me is grandfathering that, you know, that's, that's a horse with several feet.
But, but may, I mean, let me just make, just because it's grandfathered in, I think it's still specifications or adjustments as if you are grandfathered in, as Daniel said, if you're gonna add a rail or add something to improve your patio, is that gonna go in front of, I mean, this is something we wanna discuss, as in if you are grandfathered in and you decided to put a fan in your patio, that you're gonna go in front of Bozo to get an exception?
That is not the case.
We need to be clear, that's, that's what I'm saying in our ordinance.
Yeah, and we'll point out, what we'll point out to you is our non-performing provisions that are very clear. That, that was one of the goals of this code, is to make the non-performing provisions.
And I understand a lot of the code, a lot of the language that belongs to the state.
We'll point that out.
So, okay, thank you, guys, I really appreciate it. And I, we do, we do appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you, Krista. So you, anybody has to do some follow-up with it, just go ahead and do that.
Wait, to be clear, so this was an item for tonight, though, right?
It was, we'll.
So we're gonna hold it, okay, so that'll be.
Actually, we'll just have to take it off, 'cause I'll have to go back to planning commission.
Okay.
Can we not amend it?
The, the amendments we're, we're talking about tonight would fall into the state statute of requiring a planning commission with you.
And that's why we're taking it up, too.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, there is no rush for this, right? I mean, there's something that we're just being proactive about.
Yes, and we were just asking it forward, so it's fine.
Good. Thank you for saying.
We're proactive. We won't be rushing.
No rush.
Krista, may it all stay there.
I'm going to stay right here.
You have to go.
I'm here all night, as they say. All right. Unified developments ordinance review. So we, when we have a public hearing, we heard a few comments from that, but y'all asked for a work session to come back on the code. I know that one comment, one issue raised was about flexibility in the LSA ordinance. So I went through and looked and ensured that, so we've got alternative compliance remains, which allows for the standards, you know, if it's unreasonable and practical due to site conditions, those types of things. It's a staff committee that can review an alternative plan according to certain conditions such as similar quality consistent with the purpose and intent. So that's one area of flexibility. The other part of flexibility in the ordinance that actually applies code wide, which we're really excited about, is an administrative adjustment. And this can be granted by the zoning administrator for any numeric standard parking up to 10% and then up to 20% of any dimensional standard. So if you've got a setback, if you've got a other type of dimensional standard, the zoning administrator can administratively increase that variance.
Instead of going Bozo.
Instead of going to Bozo. Again, it's according to certain criteria, so it just can't be that Rachel thinks it's a good idea that day.
Are we making that clear in, in black and white so you can understand?
So how, you know, we had this discussion about palm trees. I've been corrected that they're not palm trees, they're grasses.
Oh, really?
Yes, I was corrected the other day from Sarah that it is a grass, not a tree.
Well, that makes a difference.
Yep. And so I said, well, how does that affect us on the landscape if you're doing a swap? Does it become the perception that we think it's a tree or is it based on the reality that it's a grass?
You can plant them all day long, it's just not going to count as a shade tree. You know, we have certain standards for what a shade tree is.
But I get, but, so that's, that's the issue that we found on Rosewood is that we allowed the university, we allowed the fair, excuse me, all of them to plant that and count towards their, their landscape, but yet we wouldn't let the guy across the street match and count that as part of his landscape. And so that's, do we, I didn't feel like when I read, I like the fact that we have different levels and that there is alternatives because I think that's one of those complaints we get. You know, is there flexibility in having it and not have to go to a committee and, and have the administrator make a, a call? I think it's great. But this type of instance, to me, that's where I didn't see the flexibility in there unless I read it wrong.
Now, palm trees, and they count for one?
Yes, they count, they count as part of your density, your overall density for your site, but they do not substitute for the shade tree requirement. So to use your example once, about the fairgrounds, they did plant palm trees, but only after they fulfilled the shade tree requirement. So they interplanted.
But there, I would argue the fact is that both of those companies or things did the same thing except they wanted to plant it out front and we were told, they were told they cannot plant those, they cannot plant them in the right of way. And then we as a city turned around and planted palm trees right across the street from them. And so this is where the, the, the problem that I have is that, is it doesn't seem that we have the flexi, either flexibility in the code or flexibility in the, in the ruling to help create synergy in those corridors, I guess is where I'm really going.
Sure. And I, I see how it can look, appear that way, but the, we, we, they can plant the palm trees, they just have to fulfill the street protective requirement for the shade trees first.
But so.
Not in lieu of.
So, well, that's, 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 that's where I would say, well, I'm a little confused by that because if I go out there right now, there are no shade trees in that corridor on the university side or the fairgrounds right there, they planted all palms. All of their shade trees are within the parking areas and others. They don't have them on the perimeter.
Right, and the.
And that's, that, that, that's the argument of why can, why would we allow them to do the similar, which they had done at their other business, which is down the road was allowed to do that.
Right. That, I think the, the palm trees you're referring to are the ones on the bluff roadside?
Bluff and Rosewood.
So those were planted in the right of way? That was a deotation decision. That wasn't to fulfill our requirement.
We, we planted those trees that I'm talking about.
We just couldn't make the decision of what, to plant there because it's not.
So what we're talking about, we regulate parcel. What he's talking about is the decision of the city of the VO2 is what to do in the right of way, which is totally outside of what we regulate.
But then.
Did we regulate the fairground?
And why do we plant the trees? The pop, the grasses, excuse me.
I'm, I have to give a couple of works about that.
But that's, that's, that's my point. I mean, I've got pictures of us planting those things right there and that's why I was like, when I talk about the flexibility, I want to make sure that we're thinking about this because, you know, these are the type of areas where things being consistent bring, it, it, it looks much better if you're driving in and suddenly you've got this area that doesn't match the rest of the street.
I wholeheartedly agree.
I don't think you disagree. I just think.
Yeah, right.
How, how do we fix that part?
I don't regulate, the landscape ordinance doesn't regulate outside of the parcel. So anything that was outside of the parcel on the right of way, I wouldn't have seen that goes through the encroachment.
But here, here, well, there, really, so you really totally understand it. You go out and you look at their plat, they actually own it out into the road because it's so old of a piece of property.
They being the fairgrounds, probably?
No, the, uh, the James Corner, the old James.
Oh, James. Oh, the food is good there, too.
So there, I mean, their property, DFT is actually.
I'm saying there, though, they're not.
Okay, so, so you.
But do I, so I guess the question would be is, in these type instances, do we have the flexibility where Rachel or you or somebody can make a judgment call? Because I think that's one of the frustrating things for citizens today is if, if, if they call for water or whatever, is that everything is so black and white and there isn't a black and white issue anymore. I mean, it is clearly everybody's in the gray area with every type of issue. Do, with this, does the staff have the ability to address those with flexibility so that we can move things along, that we're not sending things back to somebody or, oh, you can't do this. Well, let me look at this, I've got some flexibility. Is there enough flexibility in your belief that we can deal with people on a case by case basis?
I would say yes, and, and we've got a staff who wants to do that. Now, will we still make everybody happy? No, because.
Well, if you, if you figure that one out, then you need to write a book because you're going to be retired.
There will still be people who want to go further than we may be able or willing to in the alternative compliance. So that is certainly an issue and I've really appreciated these folks for their creative thinking and trying to get projects done. But there are some times when we need that shade tree.
I mean, I, I, I have painfully, and I say that just because it's a lot to read and it took me several months to go through it in the time. I did ask some other business folks to look at it. They all felt that it was a vast improvement for the city, so I congratulate you on that. There were just some things of where are those judgment calls and do, does this allow us to do that? Because we're going to have things that come up that don't fit, even though I think y'all have attempted to try to come up with every scenario that has given y'all a headache in the past and trying to solve. I just, I just want to know that you feel that we have enough flexibility that y'all can make those calls.
Yeah, there's, there's both a, a lot more flexibility and also some enhancements that will make some of these relationships among our new neighborhoods and our commercial districts easier too. So we hope that that will encourage development and make these neighborhoods and business districts work better.
Let me, let me say that I haven't read every line yet, but, but I did go out to the public sessions moved around and even the, the diagrams and so forth and a whole lot of that. But if we can exercise the flexibility that, that's intended this time, I, I think it will go a long way with especially some of the folks that are just not used to the way we do business or don't fully understand. And I think, I think we're headed in that direction. But I hear what everybody else is saying, just we continue in all those lines and maybe some of the educational sessions might further explain the difference between a palm tree and grass.
So, yeah, one more. The, the workout place that is on Rosewood, I think that's something we've never addressed it in zoning before in code. Is that something that you guys have worked on to modify or?
Yeah, so it won't be in this, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we've got a number of revisions that will come through between adoption and the effective date because the effective date will not be upon when you have second reading.
Okay.
It will be six to nine months out to allow us to do that mapping process. And so we have a number of revisions that we will need to make and bring to you during that period. That is one of them and it probably will just be a spacing requirement. So be aware that that will be a spacing requirement from residential that we'll be proposing to you.
Back door to front.
We'll make sure to make that clear.
Okay, good. I, I haven't read a lot of this stuff. I thank you. Hopefully, I think, I know we're headed in the right direction compared to what we had.
I got a thousand sticky notes and a lot of highlights if you want to achieve grade nine.
Okay.
So we'll be bringing it to you for first reading and second reading in August.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And so the, the drinking is that, I mean, the food and everything will just be an amendment to that so prior to, so this will go in effect on January 1, correct?
We're, well, because we've been pushing this back, we'll probably be pushing that date back a number of months. So, but what we'll do is if you still want us to proceed with this, ahead of that, this amendment, we will bring it back to you and that will be one of the amendments to the new code as well. Does that make sense?
I think when you get it on the next agenda, I mean, there's just a couple items to, to fix.
Well, we need it to go back to.
To go back to planning commission.
It has to get a planning.
Yeah, they're, they're significant enough. State statute requires that if, and it uses some term that's, I think it's significant, so it's not black or white. But I would say what we're talking about is significant enough that planning commission would need to review it, so it's not subject to challenge.
Okay. Could you do one reading?
I don't know if I, I don't know if I agree with you that it's significant.
It's.
I mean, if you, if you read, read that, that amendment, there's a lot more detail we're talking about. I, I would argue that it may not be significant.
Well, if you take out the 250, it would be significant.
No, it wouldn't.
Why wouldn't it? That's one of the key things in it.
Have you read it?
Yes.
And how many other items are in there? It's this one little sliver.
Yeah, but that's a key one. If you've got the 250 separation, which is what the Coalition of Neighborhoods is banking on.
Ah.
So that's what I.
Actually, that, that was just proposed in the ordinance as.
Well, now, now we're getting to the.
I'm now getting the feedback from.
If they liked it.
This is all amendments.
Now, that was, that's been in the code ever since we had that, this.
Okay, why, why do we?
See, I think a special exception is, is a better way to do it, but that's just me.
What we're going, we'll do is, is we'll, we'll work on some amendments and we'll work with you all.
You consider that also?
And, and, and we'll get that as soon as.
All right, Krista. Thank you, Krista.
Thank you, Krista. You getting a reprieve now for nothing else from Aunt Krista's screen? Okay, our next item, number four, alternative payment of funds. Ms. L. Mattney, Parking Services Director. This is an idea that Mayor Benjamin proposed to staff. So I really felt like we needed to bring it to the work session so we can make sure all the council is understanding what the concept is. I haven't even delved into all the ins and outs, so L, if you could walk us through it, I would suggest that we tighten up the timeframe for the proposed moratorium. So anyway, take it away, L.
Thank you, City Manager, City Council. Thank you for allowing us to be here. First of all, who is excited in the room that Parking Services is bringing something fun, fast, friendly to Columbia? Adrian.
I was shocked.
Bits of feeling shocked?
I was shocked.
I knew someone was excited.
I didn't expect that from you at all.
This is a great concept.
Oh, my Lord.
I'm capable with that. Donations for citations. While we can't solely own the idea, the concept, it did come out of Las Vegas, we want to champion, bring it right here to Columbia and perhaps thereafter, start a phenomenon with other parking services throughout the country. Today, though, who's going to do the presentation for us is Jessica Argo. She is our new business liaison. She's been with us about six weeks and she's going to run through and tell you about the program, what we're going to do similar to Las Vegas and some modifications that we are proposing and then we'll take your feedback.
Did you, do you see this in operation in Las Vegas?
I have spoken to someone in Las Vegas. Their operation is much, much larger. We were filling up a tractor trailer, but it's been very successful.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm just like to introduce myself. My name is Jessica Argo and.
Use your mic. Microphone.
I'm sorry. So donations for citation is a back to school supply drive put on by Parking Services of the City of Columbia. Upon City Council's approval and resolution on August 6th, kickoff should start on August 7th. Anyone receiving a City of Columbia issued parking citation between August 7th through the 21st may satisfy their citation by bringing new, unwrapped, unused school supplies of equal or greater value to the parking fine amount, including the receipt of the citation and the receipt of the school supplies to the parking service location on 820 Washington Street across from the Columbia Police Department. Our office is open Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:30 p.m. Donation date will be September 4th, 30 days after, close, close, sorry. Again, donation, donation date will be September 4th. Citations must be received within the period of August 7th through August 21st to be eligible. Citations received prior to August 7th will not be accepted and are excluded. Actual donations do not begin again until August 7th. Only pub, non-public safety citations will be satisfied during the program. Citations below will be excluded, such as traffic and moving violation issues by CPD are excluded. Handicap parking violations, residential parking permit violations, parking improperly, parking in no area of parking zones, double parking, blocked driveways, loading zone violations for their parking pool. We will be accepting donations such as pencils, pens, erasers. We are looking at maybe also publicizing local school districts' supply list as well. Donations received will be delivered to Why Not U2, which is a local nonprofit here in Midland.
What's, what's the name of that?
I'm sorry. The donations received will be delivered to and donated to Why Not U2.
Why Not U2?
It's at the bottom of her, of their hand, out at the very bottom.
There you go. Question?
I bet you might, didn't want.
Yeah, I'm here, everyone.
Oh, he's got it. He's got it.
So the, so the.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So the ticket then, you get a parking ticket. You go out and buy supplies, present your receipt, and numerically it has to amount to the receipt.
to the receipt. Now, tollman is not on here, right? Is that on that?
If there was an individual that had received an amount of citations that would enable them to veto, you're still subject to veto. What we don't want to do is create bad behaviors. So I just wanna go out and buy school supplies, and I want to create unsafe parking situations. We don't want to create that, even though it's just two weeks. In the future, it could be a lengthier period of time, but you would still be subject to veto. If you run down the target and you purchase $215 worth of supplies, I'll waive those citations if it's in the timeframe associated, but you would be responsible for the toadings.
So it's only the citations that are given between that date of 6 through 21?
Yes, or 7 through 21. It's a two-week period, and then you have an official two-week period to make the exchange, the donation.
So Mr. Rickman couldn't use this to pay off his past fines. He has to use those.
In that window.
That would be correct. So if you have received citations in 2018 and 19, you can't present those for an exchange only during the winter.
Are you putting values on these items or?
This being our, our first annual, we can't put necessarily a price tag. We don't know what to expect, if it'll be a handful of folks or it'll be numerous. The most common citation we expect is an expired meter or a timed meter citation, and those are $8.
But the receipt sort of values the items.
Correct. So the receipt would be the minimum, so the receipt value would need to be $8. If it was $10, we're only taking off $8 if you don't get a $2 credit.
So you have to bring the receipt with your school items?
Yes, sir.
All right, let me, let me make one recommendation. I think handicap parking violation should be off this list because handicap violation should not be exempt for anything. But anybody that parks on a handicap violation should be paying a big fine every single time.
Right there, exclusion, exclude.
The list, the...
Oh, it is excluded, never mind.
Right. While in a driveway, we don't want to create...
I'm, I'm assuming that, that Parking Services will do some sort of PR campaign. Are y'all gonna put that in with the fine?
We have a lot, the only reason I say that is you almost have to have something that you're putting in with that envelope for that ticket, because what about all the people who, I'm just worried that you're gonna get contested if a guy from out of town asks to write a check in and he finds out, well, I could've given, I could've gone to Walmart on the penny day and bought, you know, X amount.
My question was, since you're gonna do a PR campaign, which I think would be good, why don't you include in that that while you're at the Washington Street Office, you can get one of these passport things, not passport, but...
Mark cards?
Park cards, which is the cheapest way to park in the city of Columbia.
We appreciate your business.
You mean, the reason why I don't get parking tickets anymore?
That's right.
Oh, very nice.
That, that is a wonderful invention, and not enough...
It's the greatest gift I ever got.
That nobody takes advantage, not enough people take advantage of it. It'd just be an opportunity to get that before you. Or you could tell your clerks when they come in with the notebook paper, say, while you're here, why don't you...
Where are people dropping these things off?
At the Parking Services Office. We're gonna house them there. So with great success, we'll have everything housed in one place, and it will have more of a media, a wow factor when we've collected all of these things, and we'll be tracking financially, yeah, so that when we are on the backside, we will know where this came from.
Well, it would certainly be good after the 21st to give us some idea how that tracked itself out and how we looked at the very end of the program. Let me ask you this, once all of that is done, we're going to deposit those items with who that?
Why Not U2? It's a local organization, nonprofit. We've worked with in the past, not associating to Parking Services, but with Fireflies and Bookbags. I believe the city has worked with them before, and then they will distribute throughout Midland's schools.
Okay, I was gonna ask that, that was the next question. How that, how, Why Not U2? Okay, and once that's done, how do they, how do they identify the schools that you're going to be doing that with? Is it in districts or how does that work?
I couldn't answer that question at this time, but we certainly want to be aware of where the school supplies are going.
All right.
We'll have that answered by August 6th and know exactly where they're going. Any photo opportunity anywhere the school supplies end up and how they're reaching our local schools?
L., we won't be sending out water bill if we now.
Oh, yes.
Because it's all scheduled.
Oh, no, y'all must have outworked them.
I guess my question is, is there an advantage maybe next year if you do it to include the notice?
Promote it.
Water bill?
Absolutely. And I think it will grow momentum. I think that's a great idea, and hopefully there'll be other communities, even though again, we won't comment, but what a great cause to champion and encourage other communities with regards to parking, because as we know, it can have negative connotation, but when you're doing something positive and giving back to your community, warms people up. Not that they're ever warmed up for citation, however.
Do you have a good PR name for this campaign?
Thus far, we're calling it donations for citations.
Is there any way we could, you know, folk, folk around the county building paying their taxes, and of course, vehicle taxes?
Still gotta feed the meter, it doesn't matter. No exceptions, no, don't start.
Is there any way, as a part of the PR campaign, to get the rich in the county building, some pamphlet over there? Some handout per person? They're paying, I mean, if their, if their cars are ticketed, it's almost like an engine bay, obviously. You get ticketed, then you go in and pay taxes, and then you get a ticket. It, how helpful would it be to have some information as a part of PR campaign?
Are you asking them to make sure that people know that they can donate instead of pay the fines?
That's gonna be a part of it.
Or, or your concern is...
That's gonna be, as a, excuse me, that's gonna be a part of it. That's gonna be a part of it. And I think in elongating the, the PR campaign, that could very well be a very important thing.
Well, is that something that's gonna go out during that two-week period with the tickets? Is there something that's already going to be attached to the ticket? So whatever, whether it's the county building or wherever it is, if we have, right, if you have something at the time the ticket is issued, then people will know automatically, I guess, to Mr. Rickman's point, too.
And to know that there's a cutoff, so you can't receive a citation and then...
Yeah, for that combined period of time.
...when you've incurred a late fees.
Very good. Very creative. Let's do something for Christmas, too.
Thank you, L. so much for your willingness to do the program, and nice to meet you.
Meet you all.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
All right, Jessica. All right, our next item is the coordination of regional homeless services and the Implement Weather Center Service Agreement. Ms. Melissa Kaufman, Budget and Program Management Director, will take you through a few of the changes, if you recall, when we brought the contracts, just the discussion of continuing the various contracts that are on your council agenda this evening for homeless services. There were several suggestions from council regarding, particularly with the United Way as our coordinator and service provider, just a few tweaks as far as the focus that needs to be placed on certain areas. And so really thank Jennifer, I know Jennifer's probably worked on this and is here to work with Missy if you have any questions, and thank you, Sierra, for being here also. But they've really tried to work through addressing some of the items that you asked about before. I know Mayor Benjamin's not here, but he was very interested in this item, too. I know Chris is here to take some notes for him and take...
So at this point, right, if Jennifer wore with United Way, you know, along Sierra Plaza, you know, this Jennifer is here to address any questions that maybe you have regarding the two contracts. There's actually four items on your agenda type resolution for approval related to homeless services contracts that the city has with different providers. As Ms. Wilson mentioned, we did bring up United Way's regional coordination with homeless services, and that's, that's one resolution. Second to that is our second contract also is the operation of the Implement Weather Center. And then just a few tweaks that have been made, services provided, as Ms. Wilson mentioned, that have come through various discussions with City Council and with the City Manager of the past year, as well as United Way in terms of adapting as we kind of go along with regards to the services they're providing, the different focuses from each year. Those items were attached to your item on the resolution, but Jennifer's here to sort of just get an overview about them and answer the questions.
Good afternoon, Council, City Mayor Harry.
Good afternoon.
Good. Give you just a very quick overview. So we have worked with staff over the past year, and then also spent some time at the March Community Economic Development Committee meeting, talking through this as well, and also working with our vendors and partners in the work. So just give you a few updates of the things that we're proposing. I'll start first with the Implement Weather Center. I think that's the most minor of the changes. For the IWC, of course, that's the cold water shelters serving adults from November to March. The biggest change that we're gonna suggest there is changing the vendor for the transportation. So we've worked through the first five years of operating the center on behalf of the city with a private company doing the transport. They've done a very, very good job, very high-quality services. This past year, we did start talking with the Comet, and we feel like they can deliver equivalent level of quality of services, but at a lower cost. So we are recommending moving that vendor choice to the Comet. The other thing, and we talked a lot about this in March committee meeting, I know Barbara McDonald, you were there, Mr. Davis, about the Implement Weather Center really was always structured to be a very barebones facility, so shelter and last resort for people. And so it doesn't provide any kind of staffing for case management services or triage, and that's one thing that we do very specifically at United Way, is our role in the community is to really triage people who are experiencing homelessness and get them to the appropriate housing and care if they need. But we just don't have that level of staffing at IWC, and that concerned us because the folks coming to the IWC many times are people who are living in very challenging situations, and they only come in for shelter when it's very cold. So we have worked with partners all along. We've had very strong partnerships with folks like Mercy, the Melon's Recovery Center, 180 Place, our Public Defender's Office, to have folks there to help us with that triage and screening. Since then, we've also talked with USC, the Housing First Program, which also is one of your vendors and the city work, about possibly having some of their folks down there to help us with the triage. They're closed Friday afternoons, so they're staffed for there till seven during the evenings, Monday through Thursdays. They might give us the opportunity to extend that partnership a little bit more within the city, the city work, and offer that triage that we really need there. So that's the two major things with the Implement Weather Centers. So I guess maybe just pause and see what questions or recommendations you have there.
Can you expand on the Comet's transportation services as far as the time, if there are any changes of location and or pick, like the pick, where they're picking up from?
Yeah, so times would not change. It's still on demand starting at 5:45, running for an hour up until 7 o'clock, with the requirement that they do need to come back if there's folks waiting at 7 o'clock to make sure that they pick up. So that has not changed. What we have talked with the Comet, and we've talked with city staff and CPD about, is actually moving the location from the pickup from the current cleanup park facility, which is behind your, your metro headquarters here, across the street to the Comet's location there at the corner of Laurel and Sumter. We think that's better in several different reasons because if you've been, if you've looked out the window at 6 o'clock, you know that there's a lot of overflow into the streets. There's just not a lot of room for people to stand, especially on nights when it's raining or, you know, even other kinds of precipitation. You know, we, we just didn't feel right about that. So we think having that opportunity to move, to give them some climate control and a little bit more space so they're not spilling into the street and it's a black place to stand, we think that's a better move for us.
Well, Jennifer, you know, I think, I think you know that my concern back in March, of course, was the whole idea of that triage approach and how important that is. Particularly, I mean, it's important period, but particularly during the months where we experienced real cold with an infinite condition. So that triage support, and I'm glad you say that, and moving forward with that, I think is going to really help us a lot.
Yeah, no, we totally agree. So at United Way, separate even from the city work, our role as the lead for the local homeless coalition is to do that triage for the community. So we have a vulnerability screening instrument that screens for length of homeless, health conditions, other kind of factors that would kind of prevent them from accessing, being successful in housing, and then we actually run a prioritization list of people so that we can make sure we get the people who are most vulnerable at the top of that list into our very limited housing resources first. So what we really wanna do is, again, expand that more to the IWC, it's just, it is very limited not having case management staff dedicated. So just saying that to bring that to your attention, that's something we want to do, but we're doing, we're trying to be very creative with partners to make that happen.
But a homeless court, too, has paid a tremendous, I mean, they're sort of heaven lead the way in terms of that triage approach, and that's encouraged.
We've been so proud of homeless court. We've worked with them from the very beginning. It's going in and out, okay. I'll speak up. Very proud of the homeless court. I mean, now they're spreading to Myrtle Beach, Florence, you know, talking with the county about possibly expanding there. So it's, it's really amazing what homeless court has done.
You were, you mentioned about, you know, the triage work, case workers and everything. In the past, at least in the beginning, I know that, you know, last time I counted, I think there's 60, I agree, so some role for the homeless and folks in need. So are we able to continue those partnerships and, and help them in there? So is that something that y'all are able to, to encourage them to come to the shelter? Be part of, or are you looking for another space to give more room for that?
No, I, I think we have, we have space there, and I'm gonna speak up. We have space, and we have had very strong participation from partners. It is after hours, so, so it is partners working with us to make sure that they can accommodate their staff schedules to do that, and we've had strong participation beyond just the case management. We were really happy this, this past year, we had hepatitis A and flu clinical site from DHEC, and we had about a third of the folks who were there that kind of actually participate in the shots. And the way we actually got that success, it was a pretty high success rate if you talk to DHEC, you know, hosting a clinic, especially in open space like that. We had our, our providers down there to really engage people and sell the concept of getting the shots. So we've had good success there. It's a matter of just working with each individual agency, figuring out what funding source they're using to pay their staff, if that's an eligible activity that they can do, and making sure that they can accommodate it for us.
Jennifer, y'all do a terrific job, and I appreciate the briefings that several of y'all give for the Coalition of Downtown Neighborhoods on the Fridays we have at LA Coopers all year long, you're doing this work. I read an article on McKinsey and Company over the weekend on San Francisco and the problems they're facing with homelessness, and how it takes multiple groups working together in different, different ways, just like you have described, to get a control of this situation. I sent it to Missy and to Teresa, and maybe they can forward it on to y'all, but it is a larger problem than we've got, but it's the same type of solutions, people working together, multiple groups working together.
Yeah, no, we totally agree. At United Way, we see ourselves as a container of strong partners, and so we deliver.
Jennifer, a lot of discussion we had, you know, during the course of the contract about, in some of our more challenged individuals that are, you know, kind of frequent flyers for lack of a better word, as far as whether CPD happened to engage, whether there are mental health challenges going on. Talk a little bit about the emphasis on that, and if there are any changes that will directly impact that.
Sure, well, so moving on to the regional contracts, so the, the second contract is the regional coordination contract. So just a couple very quick changes there, and then I'll get to exactly to the City Manager's question. This past year, we instituted a travel voucher program, so folks who had an opportunity to return to their home community, that we could verify that they had family or friends that would be able, be able to accept them there. We did partner transitions to have that, so that's bus tickets basically to your home community. We did partner with Transitions to have that, so that's bus tickets basically to your home community. We had sixty-seven individuals take advantage of that amazing program. We've had only three that have returned that had issues that made them return back, so we were very pleased with that. In the new contract that you'll look at this evening, we actually proposed increasing those resources slightly because we ran out of money about nine months into the contract. So unfortunately, SAB let us move some money around so we could continue that on. But that is one thing, is the travel vouchers, we felt very strongly about. One thing in the contract we want to decrease emphasis on is really our housing coordination. So we had established landlord networks, kind of working very one-on-one, working with landlords to get them to, you know, overlook kind of lummishes in the past, whether it be credit or background issues when they're looking to take on renters. We found that to be very good work, but it was, it didn't have the opportunities to bring to a systems level. It was just very one landlord at a time, matching with one provider at a time. And we really felt that we could reposition our staff to be more effective with the city's resources. So what we would like to reposition to is our frequent offenders work. So in November of 2017, we started working with City Center Partnership, with CBD, with the Solicitor's Office, the Public Defenders Office, to look at those individuals on the streets that we believe were homeless and have high interactions with law enforcement. And we started with a list of seventy-four individuals. We then prioritized folks based on individuals that were having just high rearrests or high complaints, especially in the main street area. And then what we did is we worked very diligently with our outreach staff and our street outreach workers to really review that list, to make sure everybody was connected with a service provider, and we were doing that housing triage to make sure that we were screening everyone for housing. What we found with this group of individuals is this was a very challenging, very isolated population. These were people who, on average, had been homeless for a long time, had been through a lot of different services, and getting them to interact with another service provider again was challenging. So breaking down that barrier with them really was very important. So we, you know, have a weekly team meeting where we get through the list, and then we follow up with providers. We have a formal, honest outreach meeting monthly where we go through the list. And then we meet every other month with our core team, which includes the Solicitor's Office and North and Metro Region of CBD, to go through the individual listing of individuals. So what we've been able to do with that original list of seventy-four is we have sixteen folks in housing, so stable housing. We have three who've been able to return successfully to their home community. We have two that had just very compromised medical conditions, and so now they're in an appropriate long-term care facility. And unfortunately, one individual has passed away from this, this time on the streets. So it's very challenging work. I know we handed, we had a handout that we did that in March meeting, and I brought another kind of updated copy today if you'd like me to share. That we did kind of present a couple of the case studies that we work with. Each situation is just very, very challenging of folks. And working just very carefully and kind of piecing those puzzle pieces together to really figure out what the solution is for that individual. So what we're proposing with the regional contract again is to diminish that housing work a little bit and really focus on the frequent offenders list to make sure that we're screening and we're triaging our most challenging folks.
Did you get any statistics on how much that, did you say seventy-one?
It started with seventy-four.
So did you get any statistics on how much public money that seventy-four incurred while they were being banned on the street and going to the emergency room and getting lucky?
Not those seventy-four. Now, we've done, so, at United Way, we manage the homeless management information system, so that's the database where if you say it transitions, or if you're working with an outreach worker or social worker, we record your case management notes. So we have a very rich database of history on clients that goes back roughly until 2007, 2006 of information. And we have done a couple different reports, we're happy to share, that we've looked at healthcare utilization with people who were experiencing homelessness and found tremendous use of public services and private services. And then we've also done a report on youth homelessness, looking at, trying to map the pathway that young people experience early in life that leads them to homelessness later on. We'd be happy to share that. We haven't looked at the seventy-four and the public usage rate. It would be certainly interesting research for us.
Sure. One comment that I've got an email about, I'm not sure if anybody else, that do we have a food committee? Or, uh, we do it?
Yeah, we sure do. So Kathy, wait, Kathy's our homeless services coordinator, and Jeff Armstrong is our U coordinator under the city grant. But Kathy coordinates the meal share committee that we've had since the very start of the city, the work with the city. So they have a steering committee, a leadership committee that meets monthly, and then on quarterly months, we have the larger group. So we invite participation. We had a great meeting this last month with the supervisor of your park rangers from Finley to really get on the same page about how they issue temporary permits if someone is, you know, doing a meal without a permit. We shall do a generous policy of issuing a free permit, so you just need to take them up on that. So we do meet there, and so I have updated meal share calendars for you, I'm happy to share. What we have done is since we started this work is we've been able to combine eleven of the meals, and we've had three add backs, so really a net decrease of eight meals. And that's really just through helping people understand who's doing what to prevent duplication of services.
I just got an email about it, not too long ago, and I wanted to make sure to answer it correctly.
Yeah, absolutely. So if anyone's interested, just connect with us, and we'll get them.
We'll do it.
Jennifer, I'm just glad that, I'm just glad that we are collaborating with each other and that lives are being changed because of that. Again, it was good for media here, that whole piece on triage. You and Transitions and the Homeless Court, all of those persons have played a critical part in making sure that those brothers and sisters out there are dealt with and assessed in a real creative and positive way. So we're moving step by step, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. And fear or miss if we didn't do a special thank you to the Colby Police Department, to Paul Brooke and the staff. We get tremendous support from CBA, we really do. We, you know, to the point where if we're looking for someone who we've triaged and prioritized for housing, and we can't find them, you know, we will send, you know, we'll send a text out to, you know, to one of our captains, and they will respond to us. I'll have three officers call me within thirty minutes, so it's wonderful. We really appreciate just the very compassionate approach that they play with us and us.
I was, on that note, I was, Chief is in the building, but I want to make sure, particularly before tonight, I mean, it won't be any issue with the way the contracts put together, Jennifer, but I do want to make sure I'm really clear about this drop-off pickup and then the pickup site moving across to the transportation. I mean, just because that creates a lot of resources all the time, I think that's probably fine. The other issue that I want to make sure they're clear about is that through the evening, continue pickup and taking to the IWC, IWC that the police department has to do because that creates a lot of burden on, and creates a burden on their resources. So we just, I want to make sure we're really tightening that up and make sure that they're comfortable with the setup with the Comet. I don't know if the Comet has any ability to, I know that specified timeframe, but we tend to continue to pick up after seven o'clock.
Right, and we've had several conversations about that, both with our vendors, with Transitions, and also with CBD to kind of understand what would work. So pickup is, ends at seven. If folks, again, if folks are waiting, we require that the transportation vendor go back and pick them up. You can't just say, well, you're, seven o'clock, we're done. So they are required to go back. But what we found is that some folks, you know, do want to stay out a little bit later. We talked with our vendors about moving that to maybe eight o'clock or so, but it really kind of created disruptions with the meals and then the staffing patterns. And then we felt, well, if you move it to eight, then you have to move it to nine, and then maybe it's ten. So I think what CBD has done is very smart. So what they do do is they implemented this past year.
Can you, Officer, can you get the chief to get it, to listen to this? I'm like speaking for everybody today, so.
Chief, we're talking about the pickups that your officers do after the buses run for the IWC.
That we don't like to do.
We don't like.
I've been trying to speak for y'all.
We don't like, we think it's a very expensive taxi, and your services are better to use somewhere else. So the, we believe that. So seven o'clock is the pickup, again, the van has to go back. We think what Captain Roberts especially had done was very smart this past year is that he'll do a pickup at eleven and then one at one-thirty, and he'll have people just basically wait so that one van can take versus taking multiple officers off their duty to do that. So we thought that was a very good adjustment. We are open to any suggestions. You know, I've talked with Craig at Transitions many times about this. You know, we will accept drop-offs twenty-four hours a day. It is disruptive because, you know, you're opening the roll gate at that point. People are sleeping, so for the, you know, for the safety and sleep patterns of everyone, we really prefer not to have drop-off after eleven. But if it's an issue of people on Main Street, we have colder weather conditions, if that's the choice, I mean, that y'all are willing to transport, we are willing to accept them. So we're willing to do really whatever the city wishes to do.
Well, I mean, I just, I know we're pretty much on contracts. I want to be clear by the council's purposes on what is or isn't going to work before. I don't, if the language is very specific, then that's what we're going to be held to. There needs to be some kind of tweet to adjust for how y'all think it's best to do it, then we need to talk about that before.
Is, I mean, is there a recommend, I mean, is there a suggestion or a recommendation for us? Because we're very open within the resources that we have.
Does it need to be a tweet?
So what we're talking about, the after-hours or?
After-hours, what your, your team does.
Well, I mean.
You seem to have some reservations, Chief.
Well, the issue is, is the strength that's on our capacity to provide service to everyone else when we're tied up on this. And, you know, Captain Roberts has, you know, been able to, I guess, you know, do some workarounds with, you know, doing the van, tying up, you know, one officer opposed to individual officers, and it's humanitarian really and safety issue at that point. And it's usually on extreme weather nights, but.
And that's a van at, so.
It's one of the CPD vans, and eleven o'clock and one-thirty is my understanding that Captain Roberts does that. So again, you're taking one vehicle and one officer versus multiple trips. So what the officers do is they'll basically tell folks to wait at the drop-off point until the designated time.
And so the Comet couldn't do that?
I can certainly talk with Mr. Random, find out what their ability is to do that. That wasn't the original conversation, so, but I'm happy to do that. The other thing we did is we worked with Transitions, and periodically, about every six weeks, we would look at the list of the people who were frequently dropped off, and they would have one-on-one conversations with them to talk about the wise use of resources. So we could have a few behavioral modifications there, but it tended to be a smaller group of people within the larger context.
Okay, well, then, let me show kind of.
And y'all are good with the Central Street, just across the street drop, being the location.
Yeah, well, so, you know, I'll let Captain Roberts make that, make that call. He was not opposed to that. And really, it's, to me, it's negligible because you're literally talking, you know, fifty steps across the street. The added, I guess, the one thing that, and I'm assuming the thought behind it is, we do have additional security at Central Street now.
But it's, it's going to be different, a different bus than people who are in their normal course of their day trying to.
It'll be a regular Comet bus, and they'll have a special signage for Inclined Weather Center, but it will look like the regular buses.
But I'm saying it's not, it's going to be, y'all have worked through how that will be integrated with their normal operations for citizens.
Right, they would integrate it, again, with, moving the location, and we're fine staying where it is. I mean, it's up to the city's wishes. For us, you just have more landscape for people to stand on, so hopefully we won't keep spilling over into the road because you will have people with their belongings and also physically, you know, five or six feet into the roadway on Laurel Street, and it could be, you know, a safety hazard for them also drivers at this point.
Right, and you'll have that on the other side of the street, too, immersed with the people who are trying to take the bus. I'm just trying to, I end up hearing about everything later, so I have to ask questions. So I just want to make sure that the citizens who are trying to at six o'clock or between five forty-five and seven o'clock get home from work or get where they have to go, that it is not inconvenient for them.
And we've talked through with the Comet, again, you know, we're happy to do it even as a trial basis, and then if it's not working, move it back over. During the year, we had talked about even maybe trying to move the pickup location inside the parking lot more and then having the vans run through, but then we thought that might impede the access of the metro police officers being able to leave and get to their cars and things like that. So we have looked at some different possible solutions. I think what the city's done, they dig up the bushes and the brush that was behind the Clean Apart Building. I think that's been a very positive change, so you have more sight visibility there. So I think that's been a positive thing.
Well, I won't labor anymore for now. If council approves the contract as it is written, I just wanted to have the flexibility on these two particular issues about the pickup and drop-off to make some adjustments.
Have what you want us to do, we can make the resources work.
One quick question, is that okay? How much resources are you, are you using to do that, to transport, transport homeless? A lot?
Well, it was, it was, um.
Nine hundred pickups last year.
Yeah, this is extremely disruptive. That's why, you know, shifted to using our transport vans. Instead, I mean, it was just, we were just constant ferry service.
It was considered nine hundred and thirty-one.
Look at the language words, is it matter to hold with the mother?
No, I mean, I think we've got, as long as there's responsibility to address it in the best way. I mean, I, I take ownership that I didn't ask these questions of the staff. I thought maybe y'all had worked through this before.
Yeah, and we also talked with Transitions to see if possibly they could use their van after hours to make running, and that was not a possibility, I felt like they could do. So we've, we've had different conversations to try to be creative and still open to other solutions, too.
Well, Transitions, Transitions has not been, they have not had, they may not willing to do any additional transports.
Well, they don't, they don't have staff person that works that can drive them.
I know, but that's, but we can say that, too. So, I mean, they just conveniently, but I've been saying, it's, it's so, we've, you know, we don't, the nine hundred transports is not something we would have preferred to do, but it's something we have to. Because we're, if we don't transport, transport somebody, then we're going to deal with that problem throughout the night, evening and night.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just sensitive to city managers' concerns, and I'm hearing, whether it's negative or not, negligible or not, there's an impact as far as CPD.
Well, what I'm saying is neg, what I'm saying is negligible. The difference will be whether they're standing in front of Clean Parts or across the street in front of the transit station. You know, there's been great effort with pretty decent success in the last, you know, year or so to police the transit area and distinguish when somebody has legitimate purpose to be waiting for public transportation versus somebody that's milling around, you know, up in the various activities. And that's been successful, you know, I would, you know. It always complicates things when we do the Inclined Weather pickup because it's a heavy concentration of folks in the vicinity. But, you know, whether across the street or, you know, on the transit side, it's still, you have to manage those people.
I've been in the mix to catch a bus uptown, and I kind of know how that works. Based on this conversation, are we comfortable with the contract as is?
With the flexibility.
She said, she said, yeah, she's got the flexibility to work with it.
Okay, right, that's good. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all. That completes our items for the work session discussion. Second session motion is.
We have a team I want to move into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to pending threat in your potential claim thirty-nine forty, seventy-eight-two, Nicole Brown versus CLC. Proceed of legal advice will be come out, is covered by a term plan presented pursuant to thirty-nine forty, seventy-eight-two. My side's called as the whole Richardson suit.
Thank you. I think upstairs, yes, upstairs.
Go to the paper.
You're going upstairs.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Let her reckon, say hi. Give her an eye.